Okay, well, I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. Okay, well, let me see, we'll start off with Mr. Denial, Mr. Jetlag, leading the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and have a little call.
Mr. Ricucci is absent, Mr. Brenton is absent, Mr. Denial?
Here.
Mr. Sevison?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here. Okay, thank you. Let me see, at this time, we'll go ahead to the planning director report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Okay, some recent board decisions, on June 21st, Tahoe paddle and ore, appeal upheld, minor use permit denied, so that use permit was denied. Adopted the emergency shelter zoning tax amendment. On July 12th, North Star Mountain Lodge appeal, denied the appeal and upheld the planning commission. On the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan Amendments, they approved the amendments, including the plan, your commission's recommendations on the changes, that was on the same day, July 12th. Upcoming board meetings, on July 25th, 26th, that'll be a board meeting in Tahoe. We'll be hearing a update on the biomass program and the project itself. The TRPA Regional Plan update, the board, the staff is requesting the board's direction on submitting some comments on the new transect zoning that TRPA is proposing with the regional plan, so we're providing those comments for the board's recommendation to the TRPA. And then, we will be providing an update on the Tahoe Community Plan updates that we are proceeding with and the work program associated with that. August 9th, upcoming board meeting, the 2010 census and the supervisory redistricting is on that agenda, as well as the timberline appeal. Upcoming planning commissions, July 28th, it looks like that meeting will be canceled. And then, on August 11th, tentatively, we'll have the, well, we will have the Orchard at Pendron draft EIR, receiving public comments on that, and we're thinking of putting on the Placer County Conservation Plan update. I know we had talked about that previously, we'd like to have Lauren Clark come in here and provide your commission with an update. And with that, as a, the appeal fee, if you notice, that has gone up, as of July 1st, it's now $520, so just make note of that, and I believe that's it, is there any questions? July 28th, for sure, is canceled.
Yeah, you were mentioning the biomass, is that, is there about, a draft about to come out, or what's the status of that?
The draft is not ready to come out, we haven't even received an administrative draft on that, on the environmental document on that, so it still weighs out.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. Okay, we're right at 10:05, and so, Lisa?
Okay, the, this first item is a request for a conditional use permit for a recycling facility out on 2700 Athens Road in the industrial, Sunset Industrial area. Here's a 65, industrial Athens, here's the casino. These are the, the line of industrial properties along Athens, the undeveloped property in here, and the landfill in Murph. Zoning in the area for the parcel itself is an industrial, design scenic corridor, special purpose because of the Murph there. The rest of the industrial properties are industrial with a design scenic corridor, and the surrounding properties are farm with either a development reserve or a special purpose overlining, combining district of 80 to 160 acre properties. This is the project site. This portion, the whole parcel is about 10 acres. The majority of the parcel is taken up by the CEMEX concrete batch plant. The property, the portion of the property that the Barone Enterprises would be on is this, actually, this portion here, the, the whole application includes this little rectangular portion, but at this time, it's not part of the project description. The majority of this property is already paved, it's concreted, actually, from prior uses. They would, there's these two little planter strips here that have been removed, and they would be filling in these little concreted areas, and just a little teeny strip right here. But other than that, no other improvements would really need to be made to the property. The proposal is to allow a recycling center for ferrous and non-ferrous materials, plastic, glass, cardboard, and paper. They would be putting the material, the public and their own business would be coming into the here, and they would have 40-yard dumpster bins along the perimeter of the property, and the public would come in and they would apportion the recyclables into the appropriate bin. Once the bins are full, they'd be removed off-site to appropriate recycler. Each area would be separated by K-rail, and they would have an area, if somebody comes in with a load that needs to be dispersed amongst the various bins, they have a place where it's demarked, and I'll show you that on the site plan coming up, a sorting area where, and that will be cleaned daily, and nothing will be stored outside overnight. We'll be open to the public 7:00 to 5:00 PM, seven days a week. And here's the site plan showing the entrance, which is separate from the entrance to the concrete plant. It's got its own separate entrance, people would come in here, there's going to be a little kiosk where the attendant would tell them, okay, if you've got plastic, or glass, or whatever, wherever they put the bins that are marked, the people would come by, drop off their things, and they would head on out. If there's something to be dumped, it would be placed either in this material sorting area, or alternatively, in this material sorting area, and then, there'd be workers on-site that will apportion everything out. Employee parking down here, and originally, they were going to have this area as the empty bin storage area, but they have since moved it, so they don't have to do any extra concrete work. This is already concreted here, and they would just have to fill in this little strip area here, and then, they can place the empty bins over there. Issues related to this project, land use consistency, it is consistent with the industrial zoning of this whole area, she can tell, this whole strip along Athens is all industrial, already been used, it's been used, this, this particular parcel has been used for industrial purposes for over 30 years. In fact, there were several use permits associated with this parcel that this use permit would supersede those, and those would become null and void. The only one that would remain would be CUP 1249, and that's for the permanent concrete batch plant, CEMEX. Noise, it's not anticipated that it would be any noisier than any of the other industrial uses that previously were occupied the parcel. It's next to the concrete batch plant, which is next to all of these industrial uses. The surrounding area is undeveloped, pretty much, at this time. And the closest residence is over a mile away, so noise was not deemed to be an issue. The project does consist of the permitting and minor alteration of the existing public features, and with a negligible expansion, and so, therefore, we are recommending a categorical exemption, existing facilities Class 1, and we've added findings for that. And so, the DRC recommends that the planning commission approve this conditional use permit based upon the findings and conditions listed within the staff report. And I can answer any questions you might have at this time.
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones, Lisa.
Okay.
First of all, maybe I'm showing my ignorance here, but what is K-rail?
Oh, K-rail, let's see, I think I've got a picture, oh, right?
Is it, it must be some kind of a deal?
Right, this is K-rail.
Oh, that's just that, oh.
It's just a concrete separator.
A barrier, okay.
It's a barrier, yeah.
And also, on the, on the conditions of approval, will the two specific and overall site plans that we got with our agenda package, because they do have a bunch of little notes on, are they included? Is that included if we approve this project?
The, the site plans, yes.
Okay, those will be part of the, okay, thank you.
Yeah, a couple of questions, is there fencing around the entire property?
Yes, the entire property is fenced, and also, there's fencing in between this activity and this activity. And this is completely fenced along this, and they've actually put in new, the applicants have put in some new fencing here, with the slats.
And the other question would be, are there scales?
I'm sorry?
Are they going to install scales?
Scales?
Scales for weighing trucks between materials?
Oh.
Or is it just done by?
I don't believe so.
Not at this time.
Yeah, not, not at this time.
Is that it? Okay, thank you, Lisa. Okay, is there a part of the project that'd like to talk?
Good morning, Scott Barone, Barone Enterprises. We just would like to ask to proceed, if there's any other concerns.
Scott, do you have any plans for, I don't know if advertising is the right word, but letting people in the county know that you're available now to bring things to, how's that?
Well, yes, we would have some signage which shows on the site plan in the front, and, you know, that's, that's definitely the signage we'd have at the beginning. And, you know, I'm really not sure of what additional signage we would put, but, you know, we would, we would present that later. But right now, it's just what shows on the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that'd like to comment on this project? Seeing no one jump up, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission for consideration.
I'll move approval of the recommendation to approve this with the, with the two site plans that were given to us, and the findings and the conditional use permit items in our agenda.
There's a second? Any further comment? Okay, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. Oh, I must mention that though, if there is anybody that wants to appeal this decision that was made, it costs 520 bucks, and you need to file an appeal in 10 calendar days from today at the front desk of the building here. Okay, thank you.
Scott, do you want your apps back, just for austerity, or just in case? Never have enough paperwork.
Here's, here's these map. Scott, here's all the maps, in case you, in case you need them.
Okay. We'll move on to our second agenda item, which is the, let me see, make sure we're on time.
Oh, we can't do yet.
You wait about five minutes. Richard Ricucci, Commissioner, is present now, and he was present for the previous decision that we made, in fact, he made the motion. And so, now, we're going to move on to the Dry Creek Greenway Plan, and we have Chris?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, Christopher Schmidt, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. Today, we're asking for a recommendation on the adoption of the Dry Creek Greenway Vision Plan, and also, a recommendation regarding the certification of the corresponding EIR that was prepared for, for the plan. So, the Greenway Plan, it's a policy and project recommendation document. It provides guidance and direction for the future design, implementation, and management of a greenway within the Dry Creek watershed. It provides a planning tool for all the jurisdictions. The county was the lead on the project, but we also worked with the cities of Roseville, and Rockland, and Town of Loomis. Greenways, greenways are connections between people and places, most often identified with trails or an open space corridor, but can also be the waterway itself, or even a heavily landscaped or scenic country road, or boulevard. As you can see, the Dry Creek watershed is 52,000 acres in the southern portion of the county. It encompasses almost half of Rockland, all of Granite Bay, a significant portion of Horseshoe Bar, Pendron, the Mac area, Newcastle, Ophir, Dry Creek, West Placer, and about half of the city of Roseville. So, what we have are, all these jurisdictions doing their own planning, not only the cities, do they have their, their general plans, but also, specific plans. The county has community plans in Dry Creek, Granite Bay, Horseshoe Bar, Pendron, Newcastle, Ophir. But it was decided about 10 years ago, it was determined that no one was really looking at the big picture, how do these open space and recreational plans line up? And how can we recognize the Dry Creek Greenway, or the Dry Creek watershed, for what it is, and it's a regional asset? So, the Dry Creek Conservancy applied for money through SECCAG, $250,000 from the CEMEX program. CEMEX funds projects that help benefit air quality and congestion. So, the main component of the Greenway is these trails, trail corridors, that can connect employment centers, schools, parks, and ideally, get cars off the road. The county was the lead, we hired a consultant foothill associates that worked with us on this project. So, the overall goal is a continuous and coordinated system of preserved lands and habitat with recreation corridors. The Dry Creek watershed includes Dry Creek itself, and some significant other streams, including Miners', Secret, Strap Ravine, Antelope Creek, Kirby Creek, Clever Valley Creek, and Linda Creek. We worked with two teams, an oversight team made up of representatives of cities and some agencies, and then, a public planning team made up of stakeholders and citizens groups. We met for several meetings and a few public meetings over a period of two years to complete the, the plan, as you see. I won't go through all these, but the purpose, I'll just highlight a few of these. Provide guidelines to help in the preservation of the Greenway as permanent open space, assist in the drafting of plans that take place in the watershed, provide guidance to adjacent homeowners, identify trail segments which are priorities, and importantly, integrate the Greenway with existing and proposed plans. Some key principles, maximize opportunities for trails, but also, respect private property rights. It's one of the, one of the things we've heard loud and clear during the public meetings, that a lot of these creeks have been developed with private properties on both sides, and getting a trail through there would be very problematic, particularly in Granite Bay. The cities, city of Roseville has done a good job of keeping these corridors in open space, and has, have done trail construction and doing more planning for additional trails in that open space. So, the big picture, if this all gets completed, or when it gets all completed, would be a 70-mile regional loop in the region. Here's the Dry Creek Greenway through Placer County. It would connect with Dry Creek Parkway in Sacramento County, Uwata Parkway into the city of Sacramento, and then, also, the Folsom Lake State Recreation Area and the American River Parkway. So, you have a 70-mile loop, if completed. And the plan itself, and there's a lot going on, on this map, the critical issue to point out are these yellow, green, and dark green areas. The yellow show corridors where the Class 1 bike trail would go. So, here's your main route from Sacramento County through West Placer, here's Placer Vineyards, Morgan Creek, this is completed, through this undeveloped area, into the city, under the railroad tracks, through Old Roseville, under 80, along Linda Creek, out into the Granite Bay area, through these Linda Creek corridors, and then, hopping down on the power corridor, dipping into Seck County, back up to click, to connect with Folsom Lake. Also, yellow are these corridors along Antelope Creek, Miners' Ravine, and Secret Ravine in the cities, you know, the city of Roseville. These dark areas are completed trails, mostly along Miners' and Secret that the city has done. The city of Roseville's doing detailed study for this area, from the Vernon Street area, under 80, into Southern Roseville, and out to Sierra College, Old Auburn Road. So, the Roseville's doing human's work of completing this critical corridor. The light green areas, Strap Ravine out here in Granite Bay, this stretch of Miners' Ravine, areas up in here, Clever Valley Creek, they show corridors that potentially, we could have streams. There's maybe some issues out there that it would be nice to have them, but not so sure if we can actually do it. The dark green, almost a resignation that will never have public access, or bikeways along these corridors. So, Miners' Ravine up along Auburn-Folsom Road, heading north, some areas of Secret Ravine, north up here in Antelope Creek, heading out towards Newcastle and Pendron. So, the environmental impact statement, we prepared a programmatic EIR, since this is a plan, we're not proposing actual segments for construction. It'll be something that when funding's identified, and trail segments are pursued, the, the specific segments project can tear off, the EIR for their project, can tear off the EIR document, the settlement money. So, some of the issues that may, have been identified are land use, potential conflicts with adjacent properties, biological resources impacts to habitat if these trails are created, some aesthetics impacts, existing visual character of proposed project sites, some noise from trail users during construction, and impacts the public services, i.e. fire and police protection along the trails. Mitigation measures have been identified, or proposed in the document that would mitigate each of these impacts. And with that, we're seeking a recommendation to the board supervisors, that they adopt the Greenway Plan and certify the final EIR. After that, it'll be up to the county, the cities, and others to find money to construct the trails and maintain them. And it's recognized that it'll be a phased implementation, could be 20 years to get these trails in place. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Chris. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Hey, Chairman, I just want to make a comment, I guess, rather than a question, that's what I didn't ask before. I, in the report, several places, it mentions that the cities will not be adopted in this plan, and my question would be, why not? If they've been participating, and these, these trails are supposed to be connecting from the cities into the county plan, why wouldn't the cities, if they've been, they've been, not, if they've been, I know they've been involved, because I saw the, the list there, but... been involved because I saw the list there, but why wouldn't they automatically approve these?
They've been, they were involved in the planning, and early on, it was recognized that this was a county effort, that the county's intention was to adopt it. But the cities would bless it and support it, but there may be some policies in here that conflict with existing city policies.
Okay.
And they didn't want to go through the effort of having to reconcile the two documents. So they fully support it. The cities are actively implementing the Greenway, but they won't be adopting it.
Okay. Thank you.
Want a motion?
Yeah. What's your pleasure?
All right. I'll move that we follow staff's recommendation and recommend to the board of supervisors that they certify the final environmental impact report and adopt a mitigated monitoring and reporting plan, and adopt a Dry Creek Greenway Regional Vision document. And maybe a PS to that is that I agree that they should do what they can to get consistency between the county and the cities on these plans when possible.
Hold a second.
Okay, a second. Any further comments? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Okay, well, it looks like we're gonna have to hold off for about 10 minutes till 10:40 on the next item.
What will we do?
Just really way too efficient of me.
Yeah.[645.79]
To where the road already exists. And the MAC had a concern at that time, according to their letter mainly based on public safety. And since then, there's several meetings with Wes Zicker of Engineering Surveying Division and Michael Johnson, the CDR Agency Director. And this design was acceptable to the Engineering Surveying Department. And also a policy statement in the Granite Bay Community Plan is that we find that there's extenuating circumstances to the Goal One Policy Fifteen that's quoted in the staff And with this, with the Planning Department and the extenuating circumstances quoted and the acceptable design solution found by Engineering Surveying Department, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of the gated entry for the Seymour Ranch subdivision and approval for variance request to height limitations for gates, plasters, and connecting walls within the front setback of Great Oak Circle based on the following findings and recommend conditions of approval. And with that, I can answer questions now or later. You have a question?
Yeah, I have one question. And the question and the issue that concerns me is this, that Goal One Policy Fifteen where it says gated subdivision shall not be allowed unless there are extenuating circumstances right out of the general plan of Granite Bay Community Plan. And in that same paragraph on page three of the staff report, it says, "Traffic associated with these uses as well as parking demands whatever may have a negative impact on this residential neighborhood." Didn't say will, it said may. But further on in page five, it says would deprive item variance finding, item one says would deprive this subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zoning classification. That doesn't jive with the Granite Bay Advisory Council comment where it says, it's noted that our several ungated subdivision in the media area and that allowing a new gated community will be inconsistent with the Granite Bay general plan. So I have issues surrounding those comments that I just read out of the staff report that I'll probably be raising with the applicant when they come up too. But I'm, I mean, is it, who determines the inconsistency? Or extenuating circumstances, I guess?
Well, in this case, it would be anywhere from the deputy planning director, supervisory planners, and project planner, which would include me in discussions and with what we know of the situation there. I could give you one example. We're recently, we're just now doing a design review for the Carl's Jr. that's on Sierra College, just up from the Arco service station there. And their complaint throughout the years has been their very low visibility and identity. And individuals driving in vehicles would typically drive right past the Carl's Jr. and by the time they see it, they would be making a turnaround. So, you know, then they probably end up on Cabot-Stallman Road. And there's all kinds of situations like that that could get you in the wrong place and could get you going into this private subdivision because of the commercial areas next to it and the businesses. And also another example is if you're at Sierra Oak Shopping Center, which is on the south side of Douglas Boulevard, right at the light on the east side of that center, you can go straight across into Cabot-Stallman, go onto Cabot-Stallman Road. And that's another sort of, another possibility for traffic going the wrong direction and ending up going into this residential subdivision that may well be looking for a particular business or fast food restaurant or that type of thing that it exists, maybe next to Sierra College Boulevard. So looking at a multitude of things, we made the conclusion that there are extenuating circumstances. And there's also another piece that in some areas of the county, we do apply rural design guidelines. And there's a statement in there about gated communities not approving that type of thing. But these guidelines apply to lots that are over one acre and generally in rural settings. So there's some confusion of when we apply this guideline or we don't apply it. In this case, we wouldn't apply it to the Seymour Ranch subdivision.
Mr. Richard, in answer to your question, ultimately, this commission is the one that approves that.
Approve what?
Approves condition use permit and whether the gate is appropriate or not.
That's a good point. We're, we're making a recommendation and if you decide otherwise, it is a planning commission decision.
Okay.
Did you have a question, Jeffrey?
I know at the MAC, there was discussion regarding a requirement for the gates to be kept open during certain hours. Is that still?
Yes, I believe it's in the conditions of approval. Do you know, Phil, if there...
I don't think that's in the conditions. It's, there's a letter that the applicant has offered that.
I know it was in a letter. I guess it's not, it's not in the condition of approval.
Okay, are there any further questions? Ken, I see some wheels going around.
No, I, I think I can wait till they...
Okay. Okay, well, thank you, Roy. Okay, would the applicant like to step forward, Marcus?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marcus Laduka, Laduka Navdis, 3200 Douglas Boulevard in Roseville. On behalf of the new home company, pleased to be before you with a recommendation of your staff for approval of our request for an entry gate for the Seymour Ranch subdivision. Seymour Ranch has experienced a rebirth under the new home company, mostly completed subdivision, waiting for homes to be built. The property had gone back to the bank from the prior property owner. In our severely distressed economy that we continue to experience, the new home company came in, stepped up, bought the property, completed the subdivision improvements, including entry walls and significant landscaping, all previously approved by this commission, and has finished the first home in the subdivision. Many of the folks who have toured the model home have asked a question and had shared a similar concern, and that is whether the gate, the project will be gated to reduce vehicular traffic in the project. Looking to make this a successful project economically while at the same time seeing the potential traffic impacts in the future for project residents from nearby uses, my client is proposing to gate the subdivision for vehicular traffic. Different from many other gated subdivisions, the project welcomes and will continue to welcome pedestrians from the surrounding community into the subdivision via an access easement and constructed trail that was granted by the property owner so that neighbors can access the walking paths, as you saw on the site, the open space areas, and the green space area that's been built by the project, which has even enhanced that pedestrian experience with seating benches and other amenities in the subdivision to provide, again, a good walking experience not only for project residents but for people from the surrounding residential and commercial community. Understanding the need, as staff has mentioned, for the extenuating circumstances is called out in the community plan, my client believes, and your staff agrees, that the project's proximity to Bayside Church as well as to a very large retail and office complex that is directly across the street and adjacent to the project support our request. As you can see from the subdivision, drivers from those uses, if they're thinking that this project provides the opportunity for a cut-through route to points east, would come down a straight shot all the way to the end of the subdivision and could significantly affect the subdivision's future residents. Again, a long straightaway, it's not like winding area within the subdivision, so people might be discouraged. They look in and it's a straight shot, and that could affect people in the subdivision, including pedestrians from not only surrounding areas but also the project itself. At the same time, we recognize what the community plan says about providing connections between neighborhoods and access to open space. We also acknowledge that this commission over years has expressed the same concerns. Here, the subdivision was constructed, the streets are in. There is no road connection to adjacent subdivisions, nor can there ever be. Final map has been recorded and lots are created, and there is no area other than the loop street and the long straightaway. Again, we welcome pedestrians from nearby residential office and retail areas. I think we had even people walking from the adjacent neighborhood yesterday coming in picking berries in the open space area from some of the berry bushes that were there. And again, the gate itself will have a pedestrian gate as well in terms of the entryway there. It won't just be for vehicles, but there actually will be a pedestrian gate also. As the staff report noted, in terms of the queuing and turnaround movements for the proposed gate design, there aren't any issues, particularly along that portion of Cabot-Stallman Road that has a very low speed limit. It's a 25 mile an hour speed limit in that area. It's not a high speed limit that you're worried about high speed traffic. However, recognizing that during peak periods, you're going to have a greater volume of cars, there's 16 homes in the subdivision, and so you might have a greater volume there. We proposed, both at the MAC, and we were surprised the conditions aren't in, so we welcome the commission adding a condition that would keep the gates open between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., the morning rush hour, and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., the afternoon rush hour. As you heard noted, and the staff report also summarized, the Granite Bay MAC denied, recommended denial of our original design, but that design did not include the turnaround as shown in the attachments and as shown up on the screen or on the previous slide. Since that meeting, staff noted, we've met a number of times with your staff to work through turnaround that would meet requirements, not only for vehicles, we were also looking at FedEx trucks, UPS trucks. We actually got their specs to see how they would make a turnaround to be able to do that, so created the turnaround. It involved substantial redesign. This was not something that just took the existing laid-out street and bumped it out a little bit. It involved substantial redesign to the front of the project, but it does meet the safety concerns that had been expressed by staff at the MAC meeting. Also still provides access for lots one and 16, which are just inside the entry wall, to have their driveway and still be able to access the roadway in the subdivision. With that, we would request that you support our request as submitted with the additional condition that requires the hours or the gate, the gate to be open from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah. Marcus, can we go back to the previous slide? I think you've satisfactorily answered my question on the turnaround and stuff, so I understand that. I know there's some question on granting for the gating just because of what's surrounding. Maybe you can just sort of point out, as you mentioned, you know, people see a big long driveway and they think they can come down there and access. Maybe just point out on the map there, the areas of conflict with people coming in that don't...
That's probably better. Thank you. Again, the commercial center is right across the street and also adjacent. Subdivision here, residential subdivision off of Wood Thrush, but right here and right here is a retail and office center. And then further up north, you have Bayside Church in terms of people that are coming out and looking to make a cut-through and don't want to go down a turn, it's a Curtis Route or then come down to Wood Thrush and then go to Rolling Oaks. If someone thinks that this is a straight drive-through, then they could just shoot on it, there's no way to get around, they have to make the loop around. But this is the major issue with regard to this office and retail. There's a lot of uses in there, it's not just a single employer, there's a lot of different uses. And frankly, we invite folks to, on the pedestrian aspect, we have people from Trix Gym where people come over with their kids and come onto the subdivision and rock around and that kind of thing. We think that's great, it's just the fact that there's, there's vehicles that come straight across, take a right turn not knowing. I know that there's questions sometimes come up about why not just post a no outlet sign. And I lived in a subdivision that had that sign right at the entrance. And it came in and it had a long cul-de-sac, and then there was another street with a cul-de-sac. So you think no outlet, pretty straightforward. You can't get out of the subdivision and go somewhere else. I lived in the cul-de-sac every day nearly for the, let's see, 11 years I was there. Someone came into our cul-de-sac and made a U-turn. You would think a big yellow sign with two words on it is pretty clear, and yet everyone looked at it as a cut-through to get to another area. It just, people, I guess, don't read signs that say no outlet. So that doesn't work. As a practical matter, it doesn't work. And like I said, I was one of three houses in the cul-de-sac that got to see it and couldn't play out in the front yard, out in the street in the cul-de-sac because of that very reason, because people were always coming in and realizing that there's no way to get around and make the U-turn and go back out again. So that, that's really the principal, principal issue there.
Thank you.
Yeah, Marcus, so I'm the one that asked Marcus about the no outlets, because I was over on the coast here for the last couple of days, and I was going up Highway One, and there's a bunch of roads there that say no outlet, but he, I think he convinced me that there was, those don't work as well as they should. The pedestrian access from, at the entrance, is that going to be open all the time? Or is it, you said there was a pedestrian access at the entrance?
Well, the pedestrian access is here to the south. That's always open. There's never, that's an opening, it's always, always there. The pedestrian gate will be at the, at the entry gate. Oh. You have the little light there in terms of the pedestrian gate? That will be...
Maybe on that one, just sort of show for us and Rich and myself.
Where that is?
Yeah, where it is, the trail that the people use, where I know there was a lot of concern from people that you're cutting off access, that what people always use.
If you go to the aerial, the aerial photo, actually, it's right there.
Yeah, it's right there, but usually the aerial, I think...
This lot has been improved, not only a natural area but also a green space area for kids to play in. There's been benches that have been placed in there. So people coming in can not only walk around the trails of the open space area that goes right to the edge of the property, but they can also use the green space area here that's actually been improved by the new home company. Now, some formal landscaping, a play area, but also benches for like if, you know, parents want to watch while their kids are playing in there kind of thing to come on in. And that's open, again, at the south area right here, that's always open. In terms of the entry gate, if I could, Mr. Chairman, ask Aaron Sussman from the new home company to answer the specific question, the entry gate itself and the pedestrian gate on that.
Chair Johnson, members of the commission, Aaron Sussman. I'm with the new home company. Just to elaborate a bit more on the kind of entry feature, the gate we're proposing, it is a distressed wood design, it has metal slats above, so you are able to see in if that was a concern. And then off, off to the right, we're going to be moving the sidewalk and actually relocating that, so you have a pedestrian access gate. At this point, we haven't proposed that that would be a public access gate. It would be for residents to get in and out of the community. We can certainly provide a sign that would direct people to the Wood Thrush Public Access easement, and people would get in through that, that way. That's certainly not a problem for us to do that, to make sure people are aware that there is public access through the project and they're able to get in and access the, as Marcus said, the berries and other things along that pathway.
And the Wood Thrush, that's been the known area, walk area through that property?
Correct.
Right, where the main entryway now is not.
It's not, no. It's, I mean, it's...
It's been used as a trail.
Correct, absolutely.
So you just wanted to, on that pedestrian gate at the front, I guess I'm kind of puzzling what the rationale is if people have access over the Wood Thrush. Why would that gate be locked?
Well, I think at this point, that just wasn't something we had considered, was keeping that open so people could walk in via that. We were, I think the thought was, was to have people circulate through the PEDsment that we were required to put in as part of the project, and that, that's maintained by the HOA. We certainly want to make sure that people continue to have access, but it wasn't really, at least our intent was to provide access through the front of the project via PEDs.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up now if there's anybody in the public that would like to make a comment. Go ahead and step forward at this time. Please give us your name.
My name's Sandy Harrison. I live in Granite Bay, have been since 1977. When this project was approved, it was approved without gates because it was deemed unnecessary and inconsistent with the community plan. And those are the conditions that these new owners bought it. It doesn't seem to meet the county's standards. Staff report notes that county standard 75 feet for a turnaround, Roseville standard 69, and the staff report I read said 48 feet. Vehicles longer than 19 feet will have to make a three or more point turn. Where will the vehicles stack? This seems to be a conflict. They're just saying that some of the extenuating circumstances, because of all the traffic that comes up from Douglas mistakenly turns in here. So if we have that much traffic turning in there and we have a gate that doesn't have enough stacking room, and this is on a somewhat blind curve, then you're going to have some problems and some liability issues. A technical opinion from a traffic consultant says there should be sufficient room for two vehicles, but the technical opinion does not specifically address vehicle safety related to the function of a gate on adjacent traffic. What does that mean? Who is this consultant? MAC voted five to one against the gates, not so much because of the design, but because it's inconsistent with our community plan. There's always a good turnout at our MAC meetings, and a lot of residents stood up and opposed these gates. The Granite Bay Community Plan circulation element specifically states that there should not be gates unless extenuating circumstances, and they had to dig deep into the bucket to find extenuating circumstances for this one. MAC considered the location of this project and found those extenuating circumstances. The residents of Granite Bay are very involved. 10 to 15 residents worked with county staff for over a year to develop our circulation element, and it does not support gates. Recently, our community overwhelmingly supported not changing the land use policies of our Granite Bay Community Plan when we updated, but just to do the goals and policies. And between 15 and 20 residents are working with staff to update that plan. And at the workshop last week, and we'd been working hours on this thing, the committee once again reiterated that gates should not be allowed with very few exceptions. And even a public works member who happened to be there that night said that gates are a pain in the ass, and that's a quote. Gates divide and encourage enclaves, they're costly to homeowners because they have to maintain them, and nobody lives there yet. So these people are coming into my community and wanting to shut me out. They don't fit the big picture of an integrated community. Over and over, the community has opposed gates with few exceptions, only to have them approved by you people, the decision makers, most of whom do not live in my community. This is a marketing tool. It's very frustrating for the residents who've worked hard since 1987, when we developed our first community plan, and now we're updating our second one. The organization I belong to, since 1987, we have published 280 of these alerts that go out once a month to our paid members. We maintain a community website that keeps residents updated and involved. And when it was proposed that the Granite Bay Community Plan needed to be updated, there was an outpouring of resistance to changing our plan. The residents like our community, and we'd like for you to support our community plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there somebody else?
Hi, I'm Jane Nagri. I thought I wouldn't be able to be here today, but plans were canceled, so I'm here. As I was gathering my remarks, I read in the packet on Attachment I. According to this, it says you've already approved this, and you have this attachment. It says, "On July 14th, 2011, the Planning Commission took action to approve a subdivision modification for the Seymour Ranch subdivision and for a gated entry on a variance." And it says, "This approval allows a gated entry on Great Oak Circle." So I'm, I'm hoping you haven't already approved it in your head and you're open to public comment. I don't know how this got in there, but it says you've already approved it.
We have not yet.
I, thank you. I do have concerns about the safety and traffic issues. The new home company even states in their letter, which is Attachment E, that they are not in compliance with county standards. And this is a quote from their letter. "The new home company recognizes that the proposed geometrics are not consistent with the county standard, but they do meet the intent to provide vehicle stacking and ample turning movements. I travel this road every day, and I do not want to rely on the intent of standards to keep me safe." It was also stated by the traffic consultants, and the prior speaker talked about this, that in their technical opinion, it says that, on page three of the report, "The technical opinion does not specifically address vehicle safety related to the function of a gate on adjacent traffic." And this is what you're here to decide today, and they don't have sufficient information. So what I would ask, that you have further study on this. Another concern I have is that the vicinity map and other visuals in the report fail to show the extent of the curve when traveling from Douglas Boulevard north on Cabot-Stallman South Road to Cabot-Stallman Road. Wood Thrush Way borders the parking lot of the Trix Gymnastic Facility. This is a very busy area, and there's an exit from the parking lot to the right that comes out on Cabot-Stallman South. It's right below the red line is their exit, that yellow line. And when the parents are dropping off and picking up kids, this is an extremely busy area, and the gate is right around the corner or right up from that. And you will not be able to see if there is a problem with getting in and out the gate and someone's trying to turn around. You won't be able to see that until you're right upon it. And if there are more than two cars stacked up at one time, you would have to make a really fast stop. Also, the previous caller, speaker talked about the county footage for the recommended turnaround with the county saying it's 75 feet diameter and the city of Roseville 64 foot turnaround diameter. And the Seymour Ranch project is asking for approval from you for a 48 foot turnaround diameter. And I think that speaks for itself that there's not sufficient space for a safe turnaround. So I would ask that you would deny these gates for the safe travel of the neighborhood. They're not in keeping with the goals of our Granite Bay Community Plan. And when our Granite Bay MAC voted five to one to recommend that they, you deny the proposal, and one of their main ideas was they're not in keeping with our Granite Bay Community Plan, that we don't support gates. And with 17 houses, there's not a need for gates. The people that come down, the one or two that might get lost and look for fast food on that road, I, I'm sure they would turn around in the commercial on the other side of the road. And both developments on either side of this development do not have gates, and they have no problems with the commercial areas. In fact, at one time, Bobby Jackson lived in one of those developments, and he didn't see a need for, a gate for his community. So I would ask that you would deny this variance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could, I'd like to see the copy of the document she has that she says that we've approved this.
It's Attachment I, you should have a flag on your...
Mr. Chairman, what they're, what she's referring to is the recommended conditions in your staff report.
Okay. I was going to say, which showed that I...
Didn't want to do it twice? Didn't want to do it twice?
Yeah. Okay, is there somebody else that would like to speak? Marcus, we'll put you back up.
A couple of things.
Couple things, Mr. Chairman. One, in addressing the discussion you had before I talked to my client, what they would recommend is an additional condition that says the pedestrian gate in the front here be open, and a suggestion was seven AM to six PM. Does that be unlocked? In terms of that, so in terms of not only during the peak hour periods, but also during the day when, you know, people from either the office or retail areas or from the neighborhood are walking around or taking their kids out for a stroll, that that would also be open. So we're fine with that. There was a reference to the Attachment D, I think it is, in your packet from Wood Rogers. If you look at the data, that was May seventeenth. That was before the design came in that showed the design that has the turnaround. So in terms of the comments there, but I would note in terms of the stacking analysis, it's less than a car an hour even during peak periods. It's a very small amount of stack and queue that are needed. Also, this is a twenty-five mile an hour stretch of Cavett-Stallman Road. So in terms of cars speeding around, we don't see that as an issue, nor did the analysis, nor did your staff. And I would note, just in closing, not only are there a lot of gated subdivisions in Granite Bay, I think none of them, which would meet a seventy-five feet, but we have cars right now coming into the subdivision. The subdivision is opened as of the end of June, and cars come in right now and make turnarounds, right now, from the surrounding area, sometimes on a daily basis. So it is happening. So it's not something that we're making up or that it's only a potential. It's happening currently. Cars are coming in, trying to figure out, you know, can they shoot straight across? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let me make sure I got this clear. You said the pedestrian gate would be six...
The pedestrian gate, we would suggest, and the gate at the front would be open from seven AM to six PM.
Okay.
So it would just remain unlocked during that time. And then we still suggest that the gate be open. It was a condition based on what we had recommended before, that the gates be left open from seven to nine AM and four to six PM, basically the two peak hour periods for traffic.
Okay, thank you. Oh, did you have a question, Richard?
No, I think he answered it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, I'll bring it back and ask you what your pleasure is.
Can I ask the other commission members, since I'm fairly new on this commission, some of you have been here quite a time, have you faced other situations like this where, you know, there was a small, somebody wanted the gates and it didn't comply with the community plan, et cetera, that you approved? I mean, was some of the discussion on maybe some previous projects, if anybody would like to comment?
One, I remember a while back, we approved because there was a school right across the street, and there was concern that during school activities that, you know, they have a lot of parking within the subdivision. That's one I remember. Maybe Ken might remember others.
There's been a lot. I mean, there's a lot. Part of the community is gated, part's not, you know, and it's, I've heard a lot of different arguments. I think that, and I can say it now, you know, publicly, I think there is a very good argument here to have a gate. I've heard comments to the effect that, like, there's no access to this property, yet the trails where people would go across private property is left open for access. With the development and all the stuff that's adjacent to it, I think is, to me, is a good reason to have a gate. And somebody driving by, sometimes when there is the potential for traffic turning around, I know there's a big issue with a lot of people just on the size of the turnaround, I think the gate would deter somebody coming by and just driving down that road to see if they can access the neighborhood on the backside versus coming in. It's sort of a self-contained. I mean, they're responsible for their roads, for the maintenance of everything. It's not, you know, it's like a, I don't know, it's sort of a personal preference, but I understand if they were five acre lots and, you know, there's a hundred acres out there, that maybe that would be an issue, you know, for the rural. But you look at the project, and it looks like any other gated community.
And actually, what I see, you know, I drive down that road several times a day and live not too far from there. The Bayside Church has been tremendously successful in having activities, not just on the Sundays, very typical church-type activities, but during the week and on weekends, where they fill not only their own parking lot, but the parking lot for the office complex across the street from this. To the point that just a little further down Cavett-Stallman, there's been no parking signs placed in front of all the residences down there, especially for no Sunday parking, I think it says. But they do tend to exceed their parking capacity, their events are successful enough that they draw the crowds. I could see some of that spilling over onto the residential streets here, because they already go and occupy the office building parking lots across the street there when they overflow. And so I could see the gates being a stop to some of that spill over, lest these guys be dealing with no parking signs in front of their own residence shortly because of the problem too.
I think at least the time I've been here, we have paid pretty close attention to the community plan and discouraged gates, so you do see a lot of them around. Los Lows would be an example. But I think this is, for me, this is a sixteen-unit subdivision.
Not rural.
And there is, it's not rural, it's zone residential. And there is, you know, it would be desirable if there was a connection to adjoining neighborhoods, but since this is an infill parcel, there's really no opportunity for a connection. And so there really isn't a need for people to make a mistake and drive in and drive out around the roads and out. So every car in is a car out, so that's two trips, yeah. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think my comment is pretty much, not knowing this area very well, simply that if we're going to have a community plan, there's not much purpose if everyone who objects to it seeks a variance and is granted it. I don't know that there's anything that special about this particular case that would override the overwhelming community concern about, basically, we don't want gated communities here. If there's a special case, we'll grant it, but I don't know if this is that special, to be honest with you.
One of the discussions we had when this came up initially in the plan was that maybe an alternative that could be considered was that not allowing the gates when they came in as part of the initial subdivision approval, but as the development filled in, that the homeowners groups could then come in and say, you know, things are bad for this reason or that reason, and perhaps reconsider giving them gates, because the people that live there then asked for it. It wasn't some subdivider using it as a tool to sell lots. It was the homeowners had concerns, and they, in fact, wanted to have it. Conversely, I think that if the developer here puts in the gate and the homeowners don't like it, they certainly can take it out any day they want, you know. Or just leave it open. Or just leave it unlocked or whatever. So I think it doesn't preclude them from leaving it open. Okay, any other comments? If somebody would make a motion, entertain it.
Well...
I'll make the motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
No second.
We have a motion and a second?
Do a roll call.
Yes, so let's do a roll call.
Mr. Britton is absent. Mr. Rakuti?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
No.
Mr. Severson?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No. Oh, let me see, yes, let me get this right. No, I want to know, yeah. The chairman's pretty confused. Okay, so, you know, I messed up in my count. What do we have?
Two I, four no.
Okay, so the motion... Okay, are we going to make another motion?
Okay, I'll move that we approve the gated entry for Seymour Ranch subdivision with the SEQA findings and variance findings and conditions as attached.
Are you going to consider the proposed...
And the proposed, keeping it open.
Okay, so...
Mr., if you'd like, I can propose some recommendations on those two new conditions.
Okay, yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah, why don't you do it before we finalize this, so that way...
So we would recommend, based on the discussions here today, that there would be two new conditions added. The first one would be, "The pedestrian gates at the entrance to the subdivision shall be kept open to the public daily between seven AM and six PM." Is that okay?
That's good.
Okay. The second condition would be, "The vehicle gates shall be kept open daily between seven and nine AM and four to six PM."
I know. I accept that, and I'll put that into the motion.
Put that in your motion, okay.
And that should finalize my motion unless I miss something.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's do a roll call again.
Mr. Britton is absent. Mr. Rakuti?
No.
Mr. Denio?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, folks. Oh, I need to mention that there's an opportunity for appeal of this decision, and it'll cost five hundred and twenty bucks. The appeal needs to be filed within ten calendar days at the front desk here in the Community Development Building. Okay, well, thank you, folks. I understand it has approved the minor use permit, and so we'll be considering the conditional use permit, and this is in relationship to the wastewater treatment plant on Joga Road. Okay, Jeffrey, you got the microphone?
There's no way to move the slide.
Somebody stole it?
And you probably need to acknowledge that I was correct in the decision that we're looking at here today.
Yes, that is correct. Order supervisors did take action on Tuesday to adopt mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project, so you won't need to take action on the environmental portion, the environmental review, or the environmental document. You also won't need to make findings for that. We're just going to discuss the use permit today.
Okay.
There were an awful lot of slides with that past presentation. Okay, here we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. Another project before your consideration at this time is an upgrade and expansion of the existing sewer maintenance District One wastewater treatment plant. The requested entitlements include a minor use permit. There never has been one obtained for the project. They figured this is a good time to go ahead and get one if they're going to expand. There's also a minor boundary resolution request, and that is to merge all the parcels that are contained within the project site. There are four county-owned parcels in there, and they're all going to become one. Some of the buildings and structures are going to be straddling some of those property lines, so they'll bring them all into compliance. This is the location of the wastewater treatment plant. It's up just a little north of here. You head north on forty-nine, left, whoops, left on Joga Road, and then follow your nose. We've had a...
Follow your nose.
...technical glitch here. This was, the zoning is not available, the image is not available for it, so picture, if you will. The area consists mostly of residential, agricultural, and farm zoning. The project site and all those parcels that are joining it are overlaid with a special purpose combining district, which requires a determination of compatibility with new uses on the site and to be consistent with the existing wastewater treatment plant. Here are some images of the facility. Dry Creek runs to the west along the north property line, and I'm not sure which is which here, but Rock Creek runs to the north along the west property line. They join and then continue on as Dry Creek to the southwest from here. That's an image of the facility down there as it is today. The existing plant was constructed in nineteen sixty, and it serves about seventy-eight hundred equivalent dwelling units, and that equates roughly to a population of about thirteen thousand people, all within the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. The current flow rate is permitted for two-point-one-eight million gallons per day, but the existing flow rate is lower than that. It's just about one-point-seven million gallons per day that are going through it currently. The proposed improvements include a significant upgrade to the sewer conveyance and treatment facilities. These improvements are largely intended to bring the facility into compliance with the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board permit that sets limitations on constituent levels that are released into area waters. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit is renewed every year, excuse me, every five years, and the new limitations on discharge must be met by September first, two thousand and fifteen. Not much of what's currently out there is going to be untouched in the process of this upgrade. A lot of it's going to be impacted here. The expansion would increase the permitted flow to two-point-seven million gallons per day. The proposed expansion would also allow for further expansion in the future to increase the flow rate to five-point, excuse me, four-point-two million gallons per day. That would accommodate but would not exceed the build-out of the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. This is an image of the existing facility, and it's overlaid with the proposed improvements. And you can see that most of the improvements occur within the existing disturbed area. The expansion is going to occur primarily to the east onto this undeveloped lot here. This is a new control building down here. To the north of that is a parking area, and immediately to the east of that is, can't really read it too well here, but this says excluded, no disturbance area. That excluded area is intended to provide a land use buffer between the facility over here and the existing residences to the east. Condition four requires that this area remains free of structures and improvements, and that it shall be preserved as a natural open space buffer indefinitely. Although portions of the facility would now extend closer to these residences, the proposed expansion includes improvements to existing odor control measures, and the mitigation monitoring plan discusses those measures. Because the facility's operated on the site for over fifty years, and because expansion is proposed with upgrades that will ultimately reduce impacts air quality in the area, our staff recommends approval of the use permit request, and that's subject to the findings and conditions of approval that are contained in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The new area where it shows the building on the street side...
Over here?
Are we looking to access that?
To access it?
Yes. The road will be used to end there.
Down here is a little turnout, you can see. It's still going to come off of Joga Road.
That's the main existing access right there.
I believe the existing access is here. Am I right about that? In this area? No, no, it's down here. Okay. So the little drive would be completed over here. It'll extend a little further to the east. Vehicles will come in here, but I think primarily you're going to see traffic coming in and out.
But that's why I thought it looked like a road in front of the buildings that are going back to back, because the lines are right there.
Mm-hmm.
And so I felt that looked like a road.
Oh, this, yes, this is going to be a road.
Okay.
Yeah, well, a driveway. It'll provide access to the parking area back here.
Okay, Ken?
You'll have an opportunity to ask some questions. You'll have an opportunity to ask some questions when we're all done.
I have one question. On all, like, rainwater and stuff, do you capture all the water and treat all of it? Is it, you know, at the facility site?
I'll let Kevin answer that. I know some rainwater gets in there. I don't know if that's the intention of the... Yeah, the design is basically to capture all of the rainwater that falls on site and then send it back into the treatment process.
Yeah, okay. Because I didn't say it in here.
Oh, in the...
Yeah.
You said, "This is Kevin?"
This is Kevin, yes. Kevin Bell, I'm Facility Services. I'm the project manager for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, question. Explain again, the area down here in the black, yeah, that area right in there?
This area here?
Down below, just got a black outline right in there, closest to the residences.
Yeah, this is going to be a new control building. It's kind of an administrative office, really, for the site. I guess the intention was that if any of the structures are going to be located any closer to residences, it'd be best to have it an administrative office type use versus some of the facilities over here.
And that entire outlined area is building?
Just this area right here. This is a little parking area. This is landscape.
Is there landscaping barrier between the residences and that new area?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. Yeah, there'll be a landscape screening, I think, more or less all along this boundary here. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public for comment. Oh, Kevin, did you want to say something?
I would like to explain just a little bit about the project. I think you understand that the primary reason for the project is to comply with the requirements of the state Water Resources Control Board. And it is an existing site, and so we did try to keep as much of the facility down in this previously disturbed area as possible, but it is an existing site. And so some of the facilities have to be left online. We have to construct some facilities in order to take other facilities offline. And so we did have to encroach into this area a little bit. And we purposely tried to keep all of the process back further away from other residences. So I just did want to point that out.
And then also, I guess, we probably didn't mention, there's a boundary, minor boundary adjustment, and that's because it's encroaching a little bit to the east on, you know, the parcel?
Yeah, if you see, it's hard to see on here, but there's a property line that runs north and south right about here. So we do have this one structure that actually sits on both of the parcels. So I think that's the need for the minor boundary line adjustment, or minor boundary resolution.
Yeah, okay. Excuse me. Okay, well, thank you, Kevin. We'll go ahead and see if anybody from the public wants to speak at this time?
No publics.
Would you like to speak? You can come forward and speak in the microphone. Give us your name, though, if you could.
And your age.
Age, it's eighty-six years.
She heard you.
My property lies just to the east of that with the dotted line there behind where the parking lot will be. So I appreciate the fact that they're putting the buildings up front along that edge of my property. And I already have some landscaping along there, and some additional landscaping would be welcome. The reason I ask about access to it is because at the present time, they come across my driveway and go to the bottom of that and then go in, you know, at the bottom of the area that is landscaping behind the future parking area. So I was wondering if they, you know, had, that's why I was concerned about the access. And if they're accessing it from the main gate area where they enter now and have a side road going up that way, that would take care of that. So I really don't see any problem. It shows my boundary line is not a straight boundary line, because I had to purchase some property there a few years ago to get my boundary line. There's a really old marker that had been there for eons, but about, well, I didn't know about it until early two thousand and one, and they said, "No, our property line went to the east," and their property line came over to my east. And so we did a boundary line adjustment from my property there, and I see you do have it not in a straight line, because as it goes out from the road, it goes back a ways straight, and then it cuts back. It's ten like feet out front and about seven feet in the back. So you have the curved line in there. So it looks like that that's taken care of. So I guess that's all my concerns. I understand that we were disappointed, because we were hoping that the transfer plant and taking it to Lincoln would happen, but it looks like it isn't going to happen because of the economy. So I think they have considered the neighbors. So I don't really see any objection.
Okay. Could you tell us your name, please?
Oh, Grace Aldridge.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Anybody else? Okay, well, any more comments from the county?
I do want to read something in the record about the environmental review because of the action of the board on Tuesday. When you're ready, I'd like to read something into the record, just so the record reflects what happened.
Okay. You want us...
I wanted to make a motion, get that on the table, and then you can add...
Send them to it, how's that work?
Sure.
All right, I'll move the staff recommendation, the planning commission approved the minor use permit for the SMD One wastewater treatment plant expansion and upgrade, and the minor boundary resolution based on the following findings and subject to the attached recommended conditions of approval, which will not include the SEQA findings, but will include the minor use permit conditions, and there will be a statement read in by the county.
And I'll read the SEQA finding statement, the statement on SEQA.
Okay.
For the purpose of that motion.
Should we get a second here?
Well, let me read this in the record and then go ahead and get the second.
Okay.
On July twelfth, two thousand and eleven, the Board of Supervisors adopted the mitigated negative declaration for the sewer maintenance District Number One wastewater treatment plant upgrade and expansion project. The mitigated negative declaration addressed all of the impacts related to the land use entitlements requested in conjunction with the project, and is adequate to support the approval of the entitlements by the planning commission today. A notice of determination was filed by the county on July thirteenth.
Yeah, I'll move that that statement be part of the motion of approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any more comments from anybody? Okay, well, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, with that, well, I guess this minor use permit is appealable if somebody wants to appeal it, so. Go back to super. Okay, well, I'll call the meeting over then. Thank you.